Okay, so we are now live with the July, excuse me, August 26, 2021 industrial zones committee meeting. I think we have everybody present except for John Kites who indicated he will be joining us in a minute now. So I had sent out an agenda as well as obviously you've had the report for a while now to digest and go through. I'll pop up the agenda now, assuming I can find that on my screen. Hold on one sec, sorry. Okay. So I kind of tried to put together just to have like kind of frame the discussion. So we had a little bit of order. But if anybody has any before we kind of get into some of the specifics that I flagged that I figured would be topics of discussion or potentially controversial ideas, I want to just get anybody's. I know some people sent emails, but if you have any general comments or other questions or thoughts on, you know, we can, we can go in that, that direction as well.
Your call.
I'm fine either way, so I'll leave it up to you. But I, I put, I basically what I did is I could have really quick presentation together, but basically all that is was pulling sections of the report out that I kind of flagged would, like, as I said, areas I thought would be a interesting or hot topics of discussion or controversial thing. So I figured if you want to go that direction, we can, we can do that as well.
Let's just follow your agenda, Steve.
Okay. We can do that. I'm going to reshare. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. That's my official first slide. Okay. So I think just to address one thing, and I, I miss Lingala's head. She had a question about how do we, I think it was listing all the industrial users that are in the city. So we have that as a frame of reference. So we've been going back and forth with UTL. They did capture that data initially, but it was like a citywide net that they cast. So they, they said they are able to break it down by the industrial zones. So one thing we've been going back and forth with, and I wanted to get some feedback from the group on was do we, I was thinking we could list the industrial users. So these would be like the occupants or tenants or whoever they may be in an appendix by address. So if anybody wanted to look up what those were, and that's going to be based on the most recent available data. So obviously things are going to change over time, but as of the, you know, time they put that together, that would be the, the uses. And then for frame of reference in the report itself, there is a section that has the classifications of the different uses. And then we could list maybe like five from each one within that within that different classifications. That way, if somebody's questioning what, what a heavy, what do we consider a heavy industrial user, even though they, they can probably, you know, for intents and purposes, figure out that there's a contractor that's a heavy industrial user, but there may be other uses in that category. At least if we have some of the companies listed there, they may say, oh, okay, this is kind of what they're talking about. Then they have a better frame of reference. I don't know if that kind of hits at what you're, you're asking about, Tammy.
Yes, I think if we expect the public to give us feedback on this, they absolutely need to know exactly what these, who or what these users are, because what somebody might think is a contractor could be a guy with a van. But what somebody else thinks is a contractor is somebody that has, you know, 20 employees and 20 vans or trucks or whatever. I mean, I think the term, the terminology could be very wide. So I think we need to give as many examples of companies as possible. And my guess is that a lot of residents don't even know what companies we have in the city or what they do, if they do know what companies we have.
Yeah, I think that, that satisfies a couple of different user groups too. So some people may just, to your last point for, for just for their own knowledge, although I didn't know we had these many businesses. I didn't know we did these types of things in the city. So we, it's, it's good. And it's also good to kind of collect that and have it in, in the single kind of repository as well. So.
Well, doesn't tax assessor have that information? Like, these are the XYZ type of businesses? Doesn't the tax assessor have that?
Yeah, I think the assessor has that in some form. I know there's other databases available as well. So I think UTL used a different source than the assessor's office for that. But I mean, something we can always cross check too.
Steve, for perfect is I'm sorry, Tammy. Please finish your thought.
Sorry, the other person or group that I thought perhaps would have the information is somebody like the Chamber of Commerce. If, I mean, City Hall obviously should, but if the Chamber of Commerce might have a list that would be already put together, because if somebody is coming to our city to look to open a business, they might want to know who else is here in the same category or what else Norwalk has to offer.
Yeah, I'm happy to reach out to them and ask them that question.
Great, thank you.
Steve, for maximum transparency with the community, what about those businesses that don't currently exist in the city? But might be permitted under the changes being suggested?
Well, the, the the proposed definitions would hopefully clear up anything, any doubt of what, what is allowed. So are you looking for like specific business types that aren't currently listed?
I'm not, I'm not certain what I'm, I'm looking for. I, I wouldn't want a member of the public to think that the list we have is complete only to find that some future point that we allow a business that somehow hasn't been listed in the discussion at the public hearings.
Well, I think that's one way to handle that is so for what we were just talking about, if you have an appendix with all, you know, as of the date, this date, these are the listed uses within the industrial zones based on this data source, then you, that's the caveat that if there are changes after this date and time that the, you know, different, a business comes in, that, you know, it's obviously subject to change. Any business that was going to open up in a, in a location they currently don't exist, or they're not in the city already, they would actually have to get a permit to, to occupy the space. So then that's kind of the city's checks and balance to make sure that what they're, what they're doing on the property is something that's allowed in whatever zone they go in.
Maybe we also want to have a disclaimer that simply says this represents what currently exists and represents those things that don't currently exist that may come in, but may not represent all possible uses.
Hey, Steve, if you, I don't know if anyone has the document in front of them, but pages 18 and 35 kind of touch on this discussion.
Okay.
Page 18 of the PDF has the current existing you uses and it covers a lot of different items. So it'll say industrial one, and then it'll show uses like oil storage, warehouse, contractor yards. And so that's existing. And then on page 35 of the PDF, we have a similar table, but for what's proposed. And so I think Mr. Schulman's suggestion that we include a disclaimer there is definitely helpful. But if anyone is looking for a list just to see ideas of what could possibly exist, a lot of the, I think everything that we could possibly think of. And, you know, of course, we're not thinking of everything, but thing we could think of should be on page 35.
Are there numbers attached to those types of contractor yards or whatever types of businesses in the area? So if you went into South Norwalk, where there are 20 contractor yards, where there X amount of whatever, were there numbers attached? I don't recall.
You mean, you mean like the number of contractor yards?
Right.
No, I don't recall that being tabulated.
But Steve, on page, sorry to interrupt, but page 14, it has that dots, the some dots of dots of dots, which I personally think is a horrible chart because you can't tell how many dots are within the dots because they're all sort of the same color. But if that, if that is actually available in a list or a graph, it would show exactly what Darlene is asking. How many contractor yards are there in South Norwalk? How many, you know, whatever else, all those little dots. I think it would be very helpful to have that as a readable list. So you could see that in this category, there's 10. And then in the subcategory, there's another five or whatever it is. And the same thing goes for the pie, the pie shape on a page 15. It's also, it's really hard to make out what they're trying to say there are how many units or whatever that represents.
When we talked with the consultant team, I think they said that the appendix they were going to make was from the data that they use to make the chart on page 14. So I think you will have the list as an appendix, if that's, if that's what you have in mind.
Okay, well, currently the appendix doesn't list anything like that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be added based on our conversations of the last week or so.
Yeah, this, this is what you're talking about, right, Tammy?
Yes, from the beginning, I've not liked that chart. I don't know how, how anybody else feels. Sorry if I'm the only one. I don't mean to complain.
I agree with you, Tammy.
Very difficult.
It is.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I can, we can go ahead.
They don't need to be, they don't need to be so artsy. We, you know, we're like, just make it understandable. And the, the little white writing in those circles, sometimes it's given in a dropdown in black, but you can't read it. If we're showing this in a presentation to people, there's no way they're going to be able to even see what it says.
Also, Steve, if there were numbers attached to the dots, it'd be helpful to, like, I get the spatial reference that they're trying to give, but it's also like, if you look at automotive repair and maintenance, are they like, how many firms are in that bubble? You know, like, we don't, like, we can tell, like, via size compared to the other bubbles, but also we don't have a number to say, you know, there's 47 or whatever the number is in there.
Yeah. So maybe they can, you know, they can just supplement this with a different chart or some other, some text to help it.
They could just get rid of it and make it more legible, like in a bar graph or something and put the names of the businesses.
I mean, they could put the numbers in the bubbles. I mean, it just doesn't matter. Just the number attached to it so that we know what we're actually working with.
Okay, I got, I think I got your concerns on that one. Okay. Yeah, probably should have printed out copy the agendas out to go back and forth. Alright, so I'm going to pop up back up my presentation again. And I'm just going to go through the ones that I kind of, just like I said, what I figured are going to definitely raise eyebrows and make things a little more, I don't know, difficult to write word, but definitely be a little on the more controversial side. I thought this was fairly straightforward. I think one of the issues that I think was, has been problematic and it's kind of picked up a little bit in our conversation so far is just how, how the, the uses are defined and how the zones are defined and broken out. So I think that the plan tries to separate out the, the different types of we consider industrial, whether it's a heavier industrial or more on the lighter industrial, as you recall, there are currently three industrial zones now, actually, excuse me, no, three. And industrial uses are also allowed in some of the other zones as well. So what this tries to do is kind of clarify what, what the industrial uses should be and, you know, where they fit in, in terms of categories. And then eventually where those zoning designation should lie in comparison to what, what the current boundaries are. You know, if anybody has any questions on this particular table.
Steve, I have a question on the other industrial in that table three. It says mainly with the bottom two, so film and sound recording, and then artist live work. Like that's, when I look at this, it kind of seems like that's only where it's allowed considered, but we allow those things in different zones that aren't industrial.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know.
Do you want, I mean.
Like, it kind of falls, how it goes into like the non-industrial, like, I get it, but like, maybe that moves to non-industrial. I don't know. That's kind of confusing to me. Like, I would say artist live work would be non-industrial. But I guess you could have like boutique manufacturing on the ground floor, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, maybe it's just a, an asterisk placed there somewhere that indicates that these, some uses may also be allowed in other areas as well.
Yeah.
Not to meant to be exclusive of other areas.
Yeah, I think that's like maybe a footnote on that table that says that somewhere.
All right. So this is kind of the broader, the broader changes to the zoning map for the industrial zones itself. And this just break, breaks it down by the types of classifications where they think the different types of uses fit over time. And at the end of the presentation, I kind of, I pulled up the more zoomed in map. So there's the South Norwalk map, East Norwalk map, Perry Ave area. So it's probably easier to talk to those maps than talk to these. I just thought I'd flag that for you. One area I think that's always controversial is anything to do with recommended changes to building height. And I think the consultant laid out the, the case why you need to consider that. And then also provided a couple of different options of how you can deal with that in certain areas. So that obviously their, their justification for allowing greater heights in some of the zones is basically based on the need for the manufacturing space to have that taller floor plate on the ground floor, whereas they feel our existing zoning is constricting to that and prevents that kind of development in some of these areas. So their recommendation is obviously to bump that up. And then with the acknowledgement that in certain areas, especially when you're going to come in conflict with, you know, especially residential zones or other areas that you're going to need to be extra sensitive in terms of how you deal with those kinds of uses. The figure on the bottom right of that page shows one way to deal with that. And the idea being that kind of like an overlay zone would allow, you know, the underlying zoning to remain. But if you wanted to seek the higher, higher density or the higher, higher building topology for the industrial use, there's caveats that go along with that and how they kind of break the height down and break the massing down is kind of showed in this example there. We haven't employed this, I don't think anywhere, but we did talk about that when we were looking at the West Ave Wall Street plan. So it's not a new concept, but just something we haven't, haven't implemented yet. I don't know. Does anybody have comments on?
Yeah, I was kind of a question and a comment about that. Their content, content, sorry, context sensitivity change is kind of like grandfathering in what we already have. Should the zone change? Is that what they're trying to say there?
I don't think so. Grandfather.
Or it's going to get bigger, not smaller. So if there's something small there, fine. But if there was something large there or, you know, larger than what we would then propose with these layered buildings, that would be allowed to stay. Like, I don't know, I'm thinking of the new building on Wilson Avenue that's across, kind of diagonally across from the old community college by Wustoff, you know, next to the hockey rink or wherever you want to call it, by the bus depot, that big new thing. And so if we were to adopt this transitional height plan, would that building be allowed to be taller?
Yeah, potentially. And I don't, I don't know. I'd have to pull the file out to see where it sits versus what's currently allowed. My guesses are probably close to, you know, as much as they, they probably built it on based on what the parking could handle, but I'm not sure if they maxed out on the height or not. I don't think they maxed out the stories. So it potentially could get taller, but what this is saying is if you do go taller, you're going to have additional height standards or height setback constraints to deal with.
Okay. And I'm not exactly how this plays into that, but they were talking about mixed use in one of the, when you create these sort of warehouse type buildings and that certain businesses need 28 feet of height in the interior space. And I was thinking, well, why don't you just rather than having four floors, like part of the building has two floors because you've gone up into the second floor for the ground floor business. And I don't know if that's articulated in here or if, if that's something that you, we only are planning and only zoning only worries about the exterior size. They don't really worry about the interior size of a building or how many, you know, how tall the ceilings are.
Yeah, it's a good question. Typically, we just regulate the, so we do have a number of stories as another limiting factor. FAR is another way to regulate the, the kind of the volume within the, the shell of the building. So I think this attempt is just dealing with the, the massing and the height of the exterior versus anything else. So it allows for that. It recognizes the need for the taller ground floor and then uses the upper floors as the way to kind of subsidize that ground floor space, but also acknowledging that you're going to have issues with the height in certain areas. I don't know if that, that answers your question or not.
Well, sort of, it's, I don't know, it's a difficult thing, I guess, unless you have a specific. And that's, that kind of goes back to, that's why we need these buildings that we have identified. So people can understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
A little bit, I think I'm a little bit on Tammy's point here too, for mainly, I don't know, in my opinion, I feel like any space that is for anything commercial and industrial related, you should have at least 20 feet to clear. So it's like, is the 20 foot really where the next story starts? Or when you go inside, is it really like 18 feet? Because you have support beams that are on the ground full, like on the ground floor. For example, like Lily and August, you go in that building, it's 24 feet, but it's only 22 feet, foots of clear. So if anybody brings in, if anybody say they back up a distribution truck to Lily and August, if you have something as your loading bay door goes all the way up to your ceiling, you could potentially get it inside the building. But as soon as you move it out of the loading dock into the space, you're actually only 22 feet to clear, not 24. So if you had something that's 23 feet, it's actually not going to fit. Like it'll fit in your loading dock, but then it won't fit in your space. So I don't, I don't know if that's something we should identify, like it has to be 20 foot to clear and say 22 feet to height or something like that. But it's become more of a problem now more than ever, as I'm bringing tenants around is that they need the, they need the 20 feet to clear. And if we're saying 20 feet and it's really 18 feet, when you get inside, it, it doesn't work.
Well, that, that's, that would be so good, Sabrina, if you can bring us these type of examples so then we can know how to adjust the regulations or the zoning codes, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And then meanwhile, along those lines, I don't know if they mentioned it in here. I don't remember it on this page specifically, but when they're doing models like this, I think it's important for the public to know, but also via zoning regulation, that a lot of these buildings are going to have loading docks. And a lot of them, they may not have high truck activity, but they're going to have loading docks to either get out product out the door, or if they're bringing in equipment, like you can't expect, even if you have, you know, 25 foot ceilings and an industrial user can go in there. It's not like they're bringing in their equipment and goods through the front door. They're bringing it through like a loading dock type, you know, huge door accessibility in the rear or somewhere.
Good point.
Yeah, I think that has to do with the, the site circulation and then hours of operation and impacts on the neighbors, backup alarms and that kind of thing.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just concerned. I mean, as we saw with the Norton Place stuff, like you add a loading dock and then all of a sudden it's like, oh my God, there's truck activity all the time. But in reality, even if they don't have these massive trucks coming in, they need the loading dock space to get, even if they're, you know, using it once to get their equipment in there, they need it.
Right. Yeah. And that's something we could probably, I mean, I'd have to take a look at the existing kind of site plan regulations to see if, see if they're not addressed properly or not. But that's something we could always put into the standards, I think, to deal with the, on the site management, site planning part of it.
Yeah, I think that's smart just because now that I've been in literally almost all of the industrial stock that we have, which is not much. A lot of times if we go in, that's the main thing. It's like, where's the loading dock located? Because I have to get my equipment in. And the second one is what is the actual clear to the beam that's in the space, not just the ceiling height. It's like to the structure of the building.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to read through that section again to see if they addressed that at all. But if not, we'll have to have them clarify that.
Yeah. And Sabrina, if you have suggestions on different types of businesses that are looking for certain heights, I think that would be great. Like Lily and August might have one, but somebody that's manufacturing auto parts, I don't know, you know, has a different standard. And maybe there are industrial standards that we could put in this report or use as suggested guidelines if somebody's building one of these type of buildings.
Definitely. And like one right off the top of my head, like we're getting a lot of interest in for film and film studios. They need at least 24 foot clearance because they're building physical sets inside. So you're, you're seeing them like physically build out like a bedroom or a house or something like inside the physical structure of the building. So they need 24 foot clearance because you're doing like a 10 to 15 foot wall, but then you have lighting, sound, and you have to usually get on top to do all of those things and have clearance over it. So.
So what would that type of business be classified as? Where would we potentially locate something like that? Just as an example, because I think that is interesting.
You mean the, the film production?
Right.
Um, that's a good, it said, I don't have like a existing definition that classifies that specifically. It's a good question, but I think that would be something that's allowed in, you know, almost all the heavy commercial zones. I, I wouldn't see a reason why it wouldn't.
Yeah, they're allowed also in like smaller commercial too. But a lot of times they're looking for larger space because they need to build sets and it's like huge, huge undertakings. It's not, you know, sometimes you'll see that they'll do something small and just like an existing empty, empty open space, or they'll go into like Briggs, Briggs School and film there because it Briggs School and film there because it works with their set, but if they're physically building sets, that's like you need an empty warehouse essentially, like Lily and August is probably going into a deal in a couple of months for a few month lease for just for that purpose, because now all the furniture is gone and it's essentially just a big open, you know, concrete floor warehouse building of sorts.
So just looking at that table four on the bottom down, bottom left, it does, I mean, what they're recommending for ground floor heights, you would assume, even if that's not full clearance, that that height should cover that issues you bring up, Sabrina, but it's definitely good to clarify that.
Yeah, I think it will. The only one that I pointed out for that reason is that the mixed use artisan saying 20 feet. So if you're having the downstairs be, you know, some type of manufacturing that needs a little bit more than that, like the 28 to 30 foot minimum is definitely be fine, because the most I've ever seen people ask for is like 25, 26, but that 20 foot minimum could be an issue.
Yeah. So just looking, the mixed use artisan is that pinkish color. So that does encompass like West Ave Wall Street as well, and then also like South Norwalk along the TOD area. So that, so the only question with that is the also, I know this came up before is that you want taller ground floor heights for, you know, for, for retailers, if that's the choice. So I think that's a good question. How do you, you don't want to necessarily build a 30 foot high ground floor space for retail, or maybe you do. I don't know that, that might be left, left up to the designer of that.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that we're leaning towards, from a market perspective, right now, we're leaning towards doing this higher heights because we just don't have warehouse space and that's what everybody's looking for. And I say warehouse, but it's not used for warehousing. It's used for film and it's used for baking and it's used for, you know, some people want that type of space for office. Industrial type office space. So I don't think it's, you know, it's up to the market too, to decide if that developer is going to decide to do the 30 feet or the 20 feet. But I think also in line with that, South Norwalk is where the train station is and a lot of these film places and other businesses too, want to be as close to the train as possible. So taking that into account, but then there's also the conflicting parking issue as well. Like the reason why Lily and August is so attractive is because they have parking and they have that whole other lot across the street to park their tractor trailer trucks, which like it just comes with the industry, not for all of them, but for them, they have to move, you know, big set pieces which come in those like larger trucks.
So when you bring that up, Sabrina, about tractor trailer trucks, you know, I, you know, there's just an issue too with them navigating the streets and, you know, under the railroad underpass and yeah, I mean, that's going to be an issue as well, how they travel into South Norwalk. But Steve, can we just go back to number four for a second? I'm sorry.
This one here?
No, the one before.
Oh, sure.
So where you have on the side where it says existing zoning and where you have US1 and what is that I-95? So it's currently, these colors indicate what? It's business zone one and two. Am I reading those colors correctly?
Yeah, yeah. So that's up throughout here.
And so now the, on the opposite side, the proposed use is to now change that all to light industrial?
No. So this is where hopefully it's not too confusing. This one is not, the over on this side is not necessarily the zoning, it lines up with it in some instances, the, the diagram on the right. Where it does, it basically indicates the types of, it classifies the types of industrial users. So you have the heavy industrial, you have the kind of the lighter industrial, then you have the mixed use artisan. And so some of the zones where these uses are allowed overlap and some, some cases they don't. So that, that's kind of, kind of setting the precursor for the zoning map. That's kind of all I can go, I don't want to jump ahead unless you want me to, but I could.
Okay, if you're going to talk about that, that's fine. I, it just confused me a little bit. Okay.
Yeah, I'll show you in a little bit. I think the last few slides kind of break out the types of uses allowed in what zones. And this is just another slide that talks about just exactly what Sabrina was just mentioning now. And I think it's good though, to your point to clarify about that, what, what is that 20 feet actually represent? Is that 20 feet floor to ceiling or is that 20 feet with all structural elements built into it as well? So I think that's, that's something that if it's not clarified in the report and I'll read through it again afterwards, but if it's not, we'll have to get that clarified and adjust the text accordingly.
Steve, for a point of reference for us to know, if, does everybody on the call know what the Sono Ice House building looks like? And, you know, you can look at it and go, okay, I think that's two stories tall because you walk in on the bottom and the hockey rink is on the bottom and then there's spectator space on the second floor. But I'm not sure, is that a two story, three stories, a 55 feet, is it 65 feet? Does anybody, can anybody tell me how big that is so that we have a reference point when we say, yeah, you know, we want to make these 55 or 65 feet tall?
I don't know, but I think we could probably find the file or at least pull the information off of something to, to get a frame of reference.
Okay. I know the building, I know the building itself is two stories, but I don't know the physical floor to ceiling, like Florida, I would say Florida roof at that point. I don't know the height in total.
Right. That would be great to know, just as a reference point. But, and that new building too, the one on the other end of their parking lot.
Yeah, that one, that one I know we have. I, I, and that one I think is only, I have, we have the permit in our office, so I should be able to get that.
Okay. As many reference points as you can give us for being these big buildings, because you know, it's just hard to know how tall they are. We're not industrial building experts here, or at least I'm not.
Well, I can tell you that like, you know, the, what they're proposing will be taller than, than definitely from the Wilson one, that much I'm sure. If I don't know, the Ice House probably I'm going to guess is taller than that as well.
And, and then also too, like how tall are those buildings down on Water Street, those new apartment buildings? Because we've heard a lot of complaints about how tall they are. I know they're not in the industrial quote, industrial zone, but I've been hearing a lot of comments about, negative comments about how tall they are. And just a reference point.
Yeah. So I'm guessing those are probably 60, 65 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And thi- this is kind of just picking up right about what we were just talking about in terms of some of the comments about the locations of where things can go in the future and realigning things. And these are just kind of some of the broader recommendations.
Something I'd say that I think we do a very poor job of as a city is activating the retail space on the bottom and not, you know, you're probably not going to have much retail space in the true of full industrial zones, but where we have the mixed use. I think we really need to think long and hard about how we're going to attract businesses into those areas, like for example, in East Norwalk at the train station, those apartment buildings went up in a minute. And it looks to me by just looking in the windows and most of those apartment buildings or apartments are rented, but none of the retail space over there by the Pooch Hotel. There's no retail in any of those. And so I don't know if we're just kidding ourselves that retailers don't want to come to Norwalk or if there are too many barriers to doing business or what. And just like over on West Avenue, I would say it's not very successful on the retail, on the bottom floors, but we need to figure out how to do that better.
Yeah, just to point a reference on the, the, it's the 230 East Avenue, all, all the commercial space in that area is leased.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. I don't know why. I mean, my guess is the reason, I can double check with the developer, but my guess is the reason they haven't opened is probably because of COVID would be my guess.
Yeah. They have, I misspoke. They have office space in there that they're currently working from home, but they're subletting. So it's, you know, it's filled with desks and stuff, but the employees aren't there. So I think you're seeing a lot of that as well.
Oh, all right. Well, then I retract my statement. Thank you for, thank you for the update.
Yeah. And, and the zoning commission did talk about the, not to go too far off topic, but the zoning commission did talk about the waypoint retail and how that was done. And I think with a couple of things what we've tried to do since that point is try to not require so much ground floor commercial space to try to like lessen the, the burden, to try to fill the entire thing up and then put it, put it where it more makes sense. But right now, it's definitely right now, it's a tricky time to, to do that.
Yeah, I would also caveat that if you're talking about, you know, retail spaces on, in waypoint and in these new developments, you're looking at like sometimes upwards of $36 a square foot. And that's what you're paying for. You sometimes even paying less in like a merit seven type building. And then if you're going to like Wall Street, West Avenue, you can get like as low as $12 square foot. So the businesses are going to prioritize, you know, they have to be significantly established before they decide to move into somewhere that's $36 a square foot besides, you know, paying literally a third of that somewhere else in the city.
Well, I think to Tammy's point though, I'm, I'm sorry, to Tammy's point though, so Sabrina, have you seen a downward trend? With, with, you know, folks coming into the retail space or the office space?
Yeah, we have super, super, super high demand for industrial space right now, like warehousing, larger open floor plate, no beam type of space than we do for office or retail. And I think it's just, it's mainly because of COVID, I would say.
So I think we need to be mindful of that, Tammy. I think you weren't, you know, of, of, like you said, I mean, it may be on a, on a downward trend for some time.
That's possible, but I mean, if you look at Wall Street and I'm sorry, Steve, we digress, but there's so much dead retail space around and whether it's the demand or whether, I don't know if it's part of our zoning regulations or it's just hard to open a business. Yeah, you can blame it on COVID, but a lot of that other stuff has been vacant for a long time. And I think in doing this study, you know, we want to make the whole city look activated, if you will. And how are we going to achieve that? And then, you know, we're, we've been talking about the balancing of the jobs and the employment and that's all part of this and converting what was industrial or light industrial into residential real estate. There goes some of the employment opportunities, you know, and it's calm, you know, there's a lot of parts to it, but I think we really want to look at all of these things and how they have an impact.
And I think what Sabrina is finding, just in, in bringing folks around to look at spaces is going to be very critical and important for her to share that information.
Yeah. I mean, absolutely. We want, we need to know what, what the people that might want to move here are looking for and what their reaction is to what Norwalk has to offer. And, you know, see how we can blend that in with the people that live here and what they want and need.
All right. If my slides would advance, then I would bring up the next slide.
Well, Steve, while you're waiting for it to change, can I bring up there in the side on the left, there, you know, you see the little red spots for industrial marine or marine commercial, excuse me. And it's not designated in the one on the right proposed use. And in the POCV, one of the themes that reoccurs is nod to our maritime history, water dependent use, et cetera. And we do have some businesses that are marine dependent, but that zone just goes away. Did anybody else find that a little bit concerning?
Are you talking about over here, Tammy?
Yeah, the little red, yes, exactly. You know, by Cove Marine and then over on Water Street and Norm Bloom's little place, you know, doesn't even seem to be highlighted as marine use in East Norwalk, the little light pink area.
Yeah. So what you can sort of see is this outline here. So we are, you, you probably know, we're doing, do the, kind of the next phase of this is doing the, the waterfront portion of the study. So that's, it's, it's really primarily going to focus on the harbor itself. That's going to be like the primary focus area. This piece over here is all the Gardella Marine property over through here, and they've got their own kind of ideas and some things they want to do over there. And they're kind of working through some of the land use issues related to that now. So we, we didn't think it was necessary to include it in the study. We did look at this particular area right around Cove in first. But when you really get in there and look at it, there's not a lot of commercial land over there in terms of commercial waterfront land. So we didn't think it really needed any additional look per se. It, it's kind of like in the consideration area, but not an area we think is going to be strongly subject to change in the future.
Okay. Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I just, I don't want to lose the marine zones. I think they're part of the history, part of the fabric. And we can, you know, like over here in Rowayton, a developer likes nothing more than to put up an expensive condo and they pay a lot of taxes that are easy, but there goes your water dependent use. And the city doesn't mind because they're very nice, high taxpaying properties. But I think we really want to pay attention or that use is going to be gone. And I would hate to see like what happened in Stanford with Brewers Yacht Haven and, you know, they don't have a working marina in all downtown Stanford like they have before. And those water dependent uses, once they're out of that zone, then they're gone. So I would advocate leaving it for now. And, and then if the study really proves that it's important to not have marine commercial, okay, but don't take it out and then try to put it back in because once you take it out, it's probably not going to go back in.
Yeah. So, yeah, just, just in case I misspoke and Laura, jump in and save me at any point you want to. Yeah, there's zero intention to remove the marine commercial component of this, that, that's what the, the second phase of the study is looking at that harbor area. That's kind of like this, this area through here. So this is going to have its own separate study and one of the driving, kind of one of the main driving forces with this is maintaining water dependent use and maintaining it as an active harbor. So yeah, that, that's, there's zero intention to rezone it just to allow residential or something like that, that that was.
I think something that could probably help clarify for Ms. Langgallis is the idea that the, the black outline area that's shown on the right map, anything within that black outline area, we are not proposing anything in this initial study. And I think the text says that a lot, and I tried to advocate for it to go everywhere, like make no recommendations in the initial industrial study for the waterfront properties, just because there will be this whole study that focuses on them. And like Steve says, really emphasizes water dependent uses in them. So maybe a comment we could give to the consultant team is just to take the blackout line a step further and remove any proposed colors from it. So that way there aren't these types of mix ups from the public.
Well, I guess I, I would, I would keep Gardella's parcel included in that coloration as well.
I'm sorry, I was talking, Tammy and you were talking and I had my mute on. So that's what I was saying earlier, where it says existing zoning. I see the red that she's talking about and the color changes. And then this top says proposed use classifications, which to me means a change. So I think, I don't know how you, you know, how we make it more clear on what the intent is. But if you were to present that to the community, that's what I would see. One is existing, the other is what's been proposed.
All right, I'm going to jump ahead. Might as well jump ahead.
Okay.
I'll jump back after, but we might as well jump into this. I'll jump back after, but we might as well jump into this at the beginning. So this is South Norwalk. On the left is the existing zoning and then on the right is actually the proposed. So you can kind of see what the, the two differences. And I'll jump back, I think, as a slide before has the, like, the, like, the table and more indicative of the uses that are there, but just as a frame of reference. Here's the, just the two maps. I'll hit the kind of the highlights first and then I'll go back to the table. So on the left is obviously Martin Luther King Drive. This is currently this kind of like lighter purple is restricted industrial zone. And then you do have some industrial zone land on the left, which is noted as the darker, darker purple. Again, as you move up through this area, you move into what, what's mostly, you'll know, this is kind of where we're, the Ice House is over here. This is where Wilson Avenue, the new building was put up. You have a lot of, of transfer station, carding companies, heavier contractor yards, the LeJoy's, and then other uses that move through this area. So what the, the change, proposed change does is removes and realigns some of these uses into two different zones. So we kind of broken it down. The entire corridor along MLK, for the most part, is recommended to go into the lighter industrial, which is industrial zone two. And then the areas of heavy industrial, which are these kind of darker, I guess it's like a dark, dark blue, dark purple. That's concentrated along Meadow Street. And then a little bit up to Wilson and then there's a small area. And I'm forgetting the street over here. That's a little bit east of MLK. There's an area that's predominantly contractor yards now. And it seems like it's, it's a good area suited for that. Let me back up one slide.
Rockland, I think, is the one you're thinking of.
What was that, sorry, Tammy?
I think you were thinking of Rockland Street. It's a little side street in there.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this table kind of breaks out some of the things that we talked about throughout the study. And it's in two different tables because I pulled them. These were in two different sections of the report, but I put them together because they kind of drive at the same type of issue. So for the proposed industrial one zone, one thing that you can do there is contractor yards, and that would be full on like material sorting yards. Heavier uses, all the kind of things that you think of as a pure industrial zone. That's what's proposed for, for that zone. The next zone would be like the industrial, what we're going to call industrial two zone. And that does allow contractor yards, but doesn't allow contractor yards that are involved with earth processing type of materials. So that could be, you know, say it's, say it's a plumber and he's got ten trucks and then maybe outside he's got some racks of materials, but there's no earth processing of those kind of things. Also, it would allow contractor offices where they have all their vehicles parked inside. And accompanying with that, you could have accessory. So you could be kind of a hybrid where you kind of maybe you fabricate or manufacture things. And then you have the ability to have a showroom or a small retail space there. And this table, the top table also talks about self-storage, which we identified as kind of a, kind of a concern throughout the project. Self-storage would not be allowed in the industrial one zone. It could be allowed in upper stories on the industrial two zone or in a special permit in perhaps the business zones. Maybe that's also on upper stories, but that's something else we could talk about. The table down below talks about a little more in depth about says some of the things, but takes them a little bit further about the mechanism for approval for these various uses in the various zones. So as we mentioned, kind of at the outset, the business one and business two zones, which kind of run predominantly along the industrial, excuse me, the I one corridor and also up through Main Ave. They do allow in some instances, some industrial uses, some of those areas were zoned industrial previously, but have since been rezoned or the uses have been removed from those zones. So with this one, the table gives a kind of like, you know, a checklist of where things can go in those zones. And if they're allowed, maybe they're allowed either by a traditional zoning permit. Maybe it's a site plan approval, or maybe they need a special permit to operate there. So that's kind of indicates where we recommending breaking out these various uses in the various zones. So I'm hoping that kind of clears some of that up. And I'm happy to toggle back and forth between the map and between the, ideally I'd have, we'd all have two screens up and could look at this and then look at the map next to it because that might help, you know, further discussion.
That would definitely help. Are any of these, the current contractor yards going to be grandfathered in?
Yeah. So just to give you this, this map shows some examples of that. And I know this is where there's going to be, I think some of the contractors are not going to be happy with this as well, but I think there's rationale for why we're making these recommendations. So here's about the street over here. And there are several contractor yards in this area. That this, as we discussed, the darker purple is industrial one. So that allows presently, so you could have a contractor yard in that area. The, the recommended zoning is to rezone that to an I two so that you couldn't do the traditional earth processing yard there. You couldn't, I should say, you couldn't open up a new earth processing yard there. You could store trucks and keep them either like the heavier trucks indoors, or you could have lighter vehicles outside. But you couldn't have a new materials processing yard. So if someone is there operating legally today, they could continue to operate there legally in the future. One of the reasons that they recommended that the Bowton Street area be rezoned was because of the narrowness of the street. It's, it's not necessarily conducive to truck traffic. It functions that way, but doesn't mean it's the best use of that land. So anybody that was operating there, they can continue to operate their business in the same fashion they're operating it now. But they couldn't necessarily open up, say there was a parcel that was vacant to the yard that became available. You couldn't buy that and then expand the contractor yard into that area. While we're on this map.
Those current businesses though would have to comply with the new guideline though, correct?
Right. So if we, if you changed like, so the existing contractor yard, you know, have to abide by, you know, certain pile heights, they can't be above a certain thing. They have probably conditions on their approval about maintaining tarps and keeping dust down above the, above the pile. So there's not the air contaminants and the air dust that's coming out of the piles. Those kind of things. And, you know, as I mentioned, the watering. So those are what all come still be in effect if we modify those at all. Any changes to that would probably be applicable to them as well. I'd have to, if there were certain things where they may be grandfathered in, but I have to take a closer look at that as we got into the, you know, the fine detail of that.
So Steve, if somebody has a residential house on Bowton Street, and I'm very familiar with it, it kind of goes in and out along there. If somebody sold their residential house with this proposal, then some, a contractor could buy it, tear down the house and turn it into, you know, a rock crushing facility.
So zooming in on the bout and proposed. So right up through, right about, I think that's Oak Street that comes in on the, on the west side.
Yeah, and Windsor.
Yeah. So from this area north, that's currently, I believe it's neighborhood business and there's no proposal to change it. As you move south, kind of from this point down to maybe about here, it's currently industrial one. So that's the heavier industrial zone. So that's being proposed. My mouse does not want to cooperate.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are a bunch of multi-unit houses there right now. So I'm just saying, if, if one of those comes on the market, somebody buys it, then they could turn, they could tear the housing down and turn it into a contractor yard.
Yeah. So, so let's imagine that there's no moratorium on the contractor yards. Somebody could technically do that today. The new zoning wouldn't necessarily allow it to be an earth processing yards, but it could be like, say it was a plumber and he had two or three trucks and he wanted to put a small, his office there and have his vehicles parked there. He could do that, if that helps clarify.
Yep. Yeah, I think you've got to be really careful in, in the distinction or the definition of contractor. And on the previous slide, you were showing the top graph in the purple where it doesn't say, like it does in the, in the lighter purple, the second one down, non-earth moving. And in the first one, it should say earth moving, rock crushing. It should articulate what you can do. And then in the second one down, it can articulate that you cannot do that in the slightly lesser, you know, zone. I mean, because we're, these streets where like Knight Street and King Street over there are going to be the same problem. You've got condominiums and multifamily apartment houses where people are living literally right next door to this stuff. And it makes sense if it becomes consistent. I'm not arguing against that, but I, you know, these are like serious conflict of interest areas. And I think we have to be really careful how we define these because there are going to be people living across the street is just as good or the same as living next door. And it's, you know, that's what I was saying before, it's very difficult to balance this out because it's jobs, but it's also where people live.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, allowing the residential to mix with the industrial whenever that happened, I think hindsight was not a good idea. So now I think what, to your point, I think this is trying to, and there's going to be individual pains with some of these properties going forward, but I think the idea is long term is to try to allow, you know, allow these businesses to operate and hopefully thrive, but at the same time, lessen conflicts and impacts going forward. I mean, there, there's always going to be, if you have a non-conformity in a residential area and there even, you know, they're the best behaved, best behaved occupant, there's still going to be conflicts, but the idea is to try to rectify some of that. That's why some of the changes like on the, on this side of the map, where you can see some of the changes predominantly through here. You know, there's a, it's industrial, but there aren't really that many industrial uses in here at all. So it would be a good idea to rezone this now to kind of clear this up and get that. So you remove potential conflicts in the future. And one of the things I, I'm hoping that the proposed increase in height will do and some of the other kind of loosening up, maybe the parking a little bit on some of the industrial uses will maybe incentivize some of these property owners to do something different with their land versus, versus what they're doing now. So maybe this will, will help spur some positive change in that direction.
So Steve, when you go through Lexington Avenue, Olean, all those little side streets where, you know, there are a lot of empty or, you know, property that's not being used, but you can tell that they were industrial or commercial. So they're all going to be again grandfathered, correct? I mean, it is what it is. Whatever that use was, it will remain. And then I, I guess even finding out, I don't know, were they ever, were they out of compliance even at some point? And what do we do with those sorts of properties? There are a lot of little, you know, buildings that look like they used to be. You know, I, I can't even say what kind of use they were, but.
Well, they might have been retail, Charlie.
Right, right.
And they're trying to make Whistleville a historic designation, something along those lines, which would make it more residential and less industrial.
Right. So are we addressing those types of properties? Or, I mean, has that come up yet?
So I think you're talking about kind of like this.
Yeah, I can't see too much because our faces are blocking them. But yeah, in that area.
Yeah. So that, that kind of area and I, my screen isn't blocking me from zooming in too much, unfortunately, the way the dropdown menu is. But in that area, so like, sorry about that. So in that area, if you've got an existing commercial business in a residential zone. As I mentioned, you can, even if we rezone it, you can continue to operate that commercial business. So long as you're operating within the original confines of what you were approved for. If you are, obviously if you're operating there illegally, that's a completely different matter. For any property that might be vacant and there's no current use on the property, whatever the resulting zoning change dictates for that area is, are the rules that you have to play by going forward. So I think that might address some of these. I, you know, unfortunately, this is kind of a long-term play on a lot of these properties. So if there's an existing nuisance business there, and even if they're operating legally, but they're a nuisance, doesn't mean like we can chase them out. You know, that, that, that would require other legal mechanisms that I don't know if the city is willing to try to undertake for, for those kinds of things. I think it's something that, you know, unfortunately people have to live with in those areas.
So Tammy brought up the, the, the issue that the area is being designated historical. So do we have any leverage that way? I mean, what we could possibly change or kind of push for what we might want in that area?
So that, I don't have the exact bounds because they really didn't, we didn't really, really focused on that as part of this, but that's, I know it's in this general area up through here. I think what this does though, with the, with the zoning here is it does, if you look on this side over here, like all this is, the funny thing is it's neighborhood business all the way down, kind of the way, all the way down through here. And then there's also industrial allowed through the big chunk of that as well. So it does, by the rezoning, it will kind of protect and preserve a bigger chunk of that.
I don't know if it's helpful, but with the historic designation, it was approved. So that is now historic district. And the way that the level of historic district that it is works is that it, it doesn't necessarily stop any type of development, but instead, since those buildings are historic, they need to be considered. Or they need to work with historical commission if they want to demolish any of them. And so and that, that's for all buildings that are over fifty years old in town. If the historic commission wants to protest their demolition, they can. And so in that sense, it would, it would discourage us a change in use. And then from there, we're trying to encourage the same use by designating it as a historic district because then people are eligible for different historic grants. And so in that sense, rather than knocking down a building that might be there, they might receive a grant that allows them to upgrade the exterior and kind of embrace its historic culture and in turn, keep it, keep it what it is currently.
Thank you, Laura.
Before I move on from this slide, I think, and I, I guess I was done anyway. Before I move on from the slide, I think it's, it's just, I think you all, you all picked up on it. It's a tricky balancing act trying to accommodate everything, especially, we don't have, because we're not working off a blank slate. We're dealing with lots of different properties, a lot of them not necessarily big properties in some instances. So you have a lot of small properties, especially when you mentioned along the lean street in that area, a lot of smaller lots. And you have just driving through that area, there's just a complete mix of uses that, you know, and you make same thing on Bowton Street where you go from like a one or two family house to a contractor yard, to a house, to a store, to a contractor yard. So it's trying to you know, get something that over the long term will make sense and make a little more cohesive. That's what we're, we're trying to get at. And then at the same time, trying to accommodate all these different uses because we don't want to drive all the contractors out of Norwalk. I don't think that's a healthy thing for the city. But it's just trying to reduce the conflicts and allow them to operate in, in areas where there are less impacts on the, you know, the residential areas. And so that they, you know, everybody gets to, you know, as hopefully as much enjoyment out of their property as, as possible.
And so, and to that too, I, you know, I don't think that people are looking to drive people out, you know, businesses out, but I think one of the issues has, has been for a very long time is, is of their compliance and then being able to, to, I mean, I don't know, what do we do? Do we find folks when they are, when they are out of compliance with the use with, with their, with their sites? Enforcement of, of our codes is going to be a huge issue. And I, I mean, we just have to do it. You know, a lot of folks don't live right next to a contractor yard, but it's, it's, it's not a. And I, I mean, we just have to do it. You know, a lot of folks don't live right next to a contractor yard, but it, 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 it's not a. Good place to be. And so how do we make sure that, um, these folks comply and that we are really enforcing? Our rules. And what sorts of things that we do when, when someone is continuously out of compliance?
Uh, Darlene, we, we've actually placed some additional tools. In the toolbox to address those on the zoning commission. Uh, up to and including. Uh, taking back permits. From, uh, people who are constant abusers. Uh, so, uh, we, we do have some additional tools, uh, that we can use to. Uh, if you will, encourage compliance.
That's good to know.
The weak spot is it has to get to us though. On the zoning commission. Somebody's got to tell us that there's a violation and we have to act.
And don't, but we have a compliance, uh, uh, officer, correct, Steve or no? Is there someone?
We, we have zoning enforcement staff. So I mean, if I, I think. The, um. What, what, uh, Mr. Showman, Mr. Arena were just mentioning is kind of reserved for those. Extremely obstinate cases that. And, and those are ones that are permitted to operate there, but are not abiding by the rules that. That were set forth of the conditions of any approval that they may have had. So if we have. Like an illegal contractor yards different there, that way we would just proceed with an enforcement action and then. You know, fines would be levied and, and, you know, if they didn't pay, then we have other mechanisms to try to, to extract the funds or shut them down. Um, the other case is when you have somebody that's got a permit to operate there. And, you know, we've said, hey, you, you're going beyond the scope of your approval and then they still don't listen to us. Then we can bring them to the. Zoning commission and the commission has the ability to potentially revoke their, um, approval. Um, just East Norwalk, I don't think there's a. There wasn't, um, I don't think a lot of significant changes that came out of this because we, you know, recall, we just finished up the. East Norwalk TOD plan. So I don't think there's a lot there. They, you know, there's a couple of areas that they flagged, uh, and highlighted. One is Norton, which is kind of such a unique animal that it almost needs. It's like a special site development plan or something significant. But there, there are obviously, um, things we can do in terms of the rezoning. That would remove some of the objectionable uses that could go there now. So I think that's something that we can address a, as part of the broader rezoning. And this, this other item was flagged as well in the East Norwalk TOD plan, but I think it's important to, uh, call out again. That the end of the, the DPW garage itself, not the, the WPCA is kind of a lower rectangular, but the DPW. Facility itself doesn't necessarily need to be right on the water. So i- if there's a better spot that we can find in town. Um, I don't know if it exists or not, but if, if there's a better spot in town that we can relocate the, uh. Construct, you know, the city's trucks and vehicles and get them out of there and repurpose that. Uh, waterfront for something higher and greater. I think that's something the city should, uh. Take a long, hard, uh, look at. So that's another one of the, of the plain recommendations. On the last area, which is kind of a, kind of an interesting area is kind of. Just for lack of better areas of off main nav and periav area. And it's had industrial pass and there's still a lot of industrial uses there. So the study, uh, recommends flagging. Two areas for what they're going to designate is the I two, which is more or less the periav area. Um, the northern part of it up through here and then this area a little further south. Which is off of New Canaan Ave. So the, these would also be recommended for rezoning. Anybody have questions on those? And I'm happy to bounce back to some of the other charts we were looking at. And in just FYI, it's, I don't think it's going to go into the report. And I didn't think it needed to, but, um. We've already kind of started working on some of the definitions. I think Ms. Langall has brought up about the need to have. Clear definitions. We've already kind of started working on some changes to the definition. So we. Clearly distinguish between, um, a contractor yard and earth processing yard. Indoor contractor yards, just so it's clear that I think the biggest. Kind of, um, deficit in the zoning regulations as they exist is lack of definitions. They don't clearly define a lot of things that occur in the city or things that people do. So I think if we. Do a better job of adding definitions and then clearly. Indicating where they can go and under what conditions will remove a lot of the. Um, conflict ambiguity that we have now. I think that, that's one of the big deficit.
Steve, since you're right on that topic, could you? Tell me and the rest of us. If. A person has quote, a contractor business, he's a hu- a, a house builder. And he has a, some sort of a truck. And he might have another worker that has some sort of a truck, whether it's a van or a pickup truck or, you know, something that he uses to. Car, car his lumber and whatnot around with. If that type of a vehicle is parked in a residential driveway. Is that considered an illegal parking of that contractor's truck?
So that you're allowed to have, and I can pull up the exact terminology, but you're allowed to have a one commercial vehicle. Under a thousand ton capacity. So I'd automatically, um. Having two there would be a no-no. And then having, um. The other part of that is, which is a little trickier to kind of, um, define and kind of catch somebody in the act is when they're having. The workers come to the site. So that's one thing we get a lot is that, you know, that. The, you know, there's a truck or two, but there's also three or four guys reporting to work there. So then they're parking on the street and the driveway and the grass. So that, that's the other aspect of that that gets challenging. So you, you, you know, if, if you were like a. Sole proprietor and you were, you were, you were a plumbing contractor and you drove your van home. If it didn't exceed that one thousand ton capacity. Or what, excuse me, one ton, yeah, thousand ton would be pretty big. Uh, one ton capacity, you know, you bring that vehicle home and then you go out to the job site and you come home. That's kind of your. Your mode of transportation to work. Whereas if you had, you know, two or three trucks and the other things going on, that's where, you know, the, the conflicts arise.
Like a dump truck or something, a small.
Right. Yeah, that, that's what it's definitely going to be a problem.
Okay. I think it would be helpful when we go to the public with this. If you have some of those definitions of what is allowable and what is not allowable, that that would help. People understand these zones, like they can see in their mind, okay. The guy that has a Chevy pickup truck that he stacks his lumber in it for, to take it to the job site, that's okay. But if he has two other dump trucks in his yard, then really he's not supposed to park those in his residential yard. But he can, he would have to find a place to do his business. In a light industrial zone or whatever zone it is that allows that type of vehicular parking. Does that make sense? It's like, where do all the, you know, like all the, the, the massive dump trucks that ply our streets. What zone are they allowed to park in?
So to that, Tammy, that's so funny. You, you, you keep reading my mind. I just sort of bring this up as well. So. A lot of them park in South Norwalk. And so one of the issues that we really have are, are, are. Workers and their employers seem to allow them to drive a truck home. So that they have transportation back and forth. And so clearly there is no place to really park. Parking is an issue. You know, and if you, you know, I just want to take Lexington Avenue, Whistleville, which is now historical. I mean, you can barely find a place to park. And you know that there are vans from employers and that's the mode of transportation. So if you're saying now. Where are they allowed to park in a heavy industrial area? Then that means South Norwalk. And so. That in itself causes a problem. In the neighborhood. And so is there any? Interest or conversation about having some sort of industrial park? So to speak, where, where people can park, pay to park. I mean, I don't, I don't know, pay to park their vehicles, but I think South Norwalk is bearing the brunt of that. You have people parking in their front lawn that are barely any front lawn. You have all sorts of violations going on. And that's a real issue.
Yeah. I would agree.
I did lie. There's one other area, um, very minor changes, but. This is kind of a Wall Street West Ave area. And as part of the, the plan that was approved there a few years ago, there were a few industrial areas. Little industrial pockets that remained. The plan recommends just rezoning those into more into the central business district. So I, but I just flagged those. Okay. So that was it for slides and stuff I had to go through. To get back to one of the questions earlier, I think we can kind of beef up this table. Table five a little bit, maybe work on doing something with table five and, and the, the table below to kind of. Make them. Make sure they sync up a hundred percent. And then also just add, add a little more clarity to, um. About like the earth moving versus not earth moving and, and. That way there's hopefully less, less question going forward. Anybody else have questions about the slides I brought up at all? I'm happy to. Go through again, or however you want to do it.
I, I think this is, this is, you know, this is a good start, but I know you and I had a conversation briefly, uh, when you sent this out. And, and I, and I know folks are going to be, you know, somewhat disappointed. Cause South Newark seems to be the same. But I don't know, maybe there's some opportunity to make some real, some significant, some changes that feel like there's some real changes. And, and how we move forward with it. I don't know. There's a lot that needs to be done though.
Yeah, I, I think the, the trickiest part, and I think where the, I, I think your point is fair about the disappointment is if. If, when you have a, a legal contractor yard and it, it makes. You know, people look at the, the map and we say, you know, it makes sense to. Realign this so it's, it's not an area where this type of contractor should be based on that. And there should be a reason why. It, it shouldn't be allowed there. Just hopefully there's a, uh, the, the maps and the, the, the rationale behind it. Or justify the change. But I think people even if, we can say, look, we understand that in the future, this area should be transitioning to something else. Whether it's, um, a different type of commercial use, or maybe it's a red, change it to residential. But there is a guy that's operating his business or his, her business there. That's completely legal and is playing by the rules and there's nothing we can do to remove them from that site. And I don't think it's in the city's interest to try to, any kind of eminent domain or any other tactic that might be available. I just don't think that's a good. A good policy, but I, I think that, that we do need to tell people, look, sorry, there are going to be. You know, I may not, it's, it's, this is not an overnight plan. You know, with, with this kind of thing, it's just not.
And, and I think many people don't want to see more. Less is great, but not more. And a lot of, of enforcement of the rules.
Well, I think that's, I think that's the point. I think, uh, people, people want to see enforcement. Um, and I, I think that's the way to mitigate their, their frustration. With the, um, fact that we can't force. Uh, businesses out. Legally, we, we, we can't do that except at enormous, uh, expense to the city. But, uh, we can enforce the existing rules. And, uh, you know, if Steve needs some help with that. Uh, through, uh, additional staffing. Then we ought to fight for that.
Thanks, Lou. I, I think two questions that the report brought up that. We all want to think about and what was most interesting is says. That Norwalk has declining employment. Um, in industrial areas. So. Is that because over the years we've let developers convert our industrial spaces into housing? Is that the trend because we just don't have the big? You know, factory type places that we used to. Okay, that's just a trend in the market or has Norwalk. Compared to the other cities that were studied in the report. Converted businesses to housing for a reason. Was it part of a plan to make us more of a. Bedroom community and less of an industrial working city. Um, and then I think the other important question that it asks is. Why is our industrial employment the lowest of all the cities studied? And I think. I don't want to speak for anybody else, but we want to keep jobs here in the city. We need them. We have a growing employment as we just learned from the census and it was. The growing population, excuse me. But where are those people working? And, you know, they were not all like high-tech bio med jobs and, or the people that came here. And so we need to. Employ people in the city, but it's definitely. A balance and how do you work that out? And I think those are like really important questions that this study hopefully will. Help us answer. Um, you know, if we've made mistakes in the past, let's try to correct them with this. Going forward so that Norwalk can be, you know, prosperous, but also employ. Everybody that lives here that wants to be employed. And I'd love to hear what Mr. Rowena has to say. He's been very quiet not to put you on the spot, but. Like you guys, so you're, Darlene and I have been like running the meeting here, not running it, but ma- making all the comments.
Oh, I've actually, um, been thinking especially about what Ms. Young has had to say. Um, in terms of enforcement, parking. And, you know, what I consider to be consideration for your neighbors. There are uses that I live next door to. You know, which if the people. Running them were considerate. Wouldn't be any problem at all. And. You know, I know you can't legislate consideration, but you can certainly enforce it to make it a little better. I remember we had a zoning application some time ago and the. Uh, applicant wanted to take, I, I want to say sixty or eighty feet of on-street parking. To use to, to, to eliminate it, to be able to have access to their site. And the neighbors were up in arms because they would lose those parking spaces. And I went and I looked at the apartments that were there, and I think this would apply to a number of the places in South Norwalk, especially in the yards. And. The buildings had adequate. On, off-street parking, but the off-street parking was being rented to other people. So the people that lived in the building had to park on the street. And the contractor yards are supposed to have. Parking for their employees, but they don't because they're using it for materials and trucks and all the rest of it. So. To, um, Darlene's point, if I may call you that. It goes out on the street and it is a total annoyance. And I think that if legal contractor yards were. Where they are and were considerate and went with the noise regulations and the business operation regulations and. Uh, police their yards. I mean, think about in East Norwalk, there was a contractor yard on, um. Goldstein Place. That was an embarrassment. It was the worst looking place I ever saw in my life. And, you know, I don't want to talk about one guy, but. Penn's operation went in there and all of a sudden it was better looking there than a city park. So it can be done. And maybe it does have to be done through enforcement.
Yeah, and also. The building department has somebody that enforces the ordinances, don't they, Steve?
Uh, the blight ordinance.
Blight, okay. Well, blight is a lot of probably, or at least some of what we are referring to. And that's what makes your city just visit, vis- visually very unattractive. And also too, you know, the building that was just approved for Bowden Street, that. Six unit, two building, uh, multifamily. I don't know if anybody's driven by and I'm not going to judge it until. Finished, but that thing looks like a behemoth, the two of them, both those buildings. And to me. It doesn't look like you can back your car out of the garage one side without backing into the car on the other side and the setbacks. They're very tight in there and, you know, by right, I think they were able to do it, but the scale of the building. Is rather enormous for the parcel of land. I mean. So I, I think we have to keep those things in mind as we talk about these zones and what. You know, what we allow to go in.
I thought, Tammy, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. They're going to be backing out into traffic.
Yeah, and there's, you know, six apartments or condominium. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and there's, you know, six apartments or condominiums, call them what you will, that might have two cars apiece. And if they have a friend, there is, there already isn't any parking. And there's a little business right there. I mean, I guess the people that, you know, patronize the business just walk from their home, but parking on those streets is already very tight as it is. And Lou, you make a great point, or Mr. Rowena, that contractors fill their yards up with piles of rocks and dirt, so their employees can't park in the in the property or on the property. It's a problem.
Um so for next steps, um I know we got some, I mean, I have some notes. I'll compare notes with um Laura and Amelia and Sabrina and make sure we're all on the same page about what we heard. And we also had collected some things that we flagged earlier, like and and also talked about the uh defining and listing all the various um industrial uses that are operating there. Um so we can hopefully turn that around fairly quickly. I want to try to get the plan out for public comment too, so we can hear, um you know, give everybody a month or so to read and as they have time. And then the question is, how do we, you know, the public process and public presentation of it in terms of um next step, obviously, I think we, what we did with the East Norwalk plan was amend the uh plan of conservation and development, which is fairly straightforward process to kind of incorporate the recommendations of the industrial zones plan to kind of be the guiding um guiding regulatory document for for changes going forward for these areas. So I think we can follow a similar, similar path. Um but I don't know if anybody has any specific questions or comments about how to roll it out or when to roll it out, those kind of things.
Well, Steve, will you take into consideration what we talked about, especially with the charts? Have you till revised it before it gets to the public?
Yes, yeah. I I figured we'd make it, we'd make one more round of changes based on, we had a, we had a little list that we tabulated in-house. Add the um changes, what we talked about today to them, have them edit the document and then publish it out.
Okay.
We're at a point in the process and a point in the year um where I think you can move this uh forward. Uh if you, if if you need to give the the public a a month to review it, uh that's fine, because then we're looking at um uh late September, sometime in October perhaps. Um and um summer's over, uh kids are back to school. Um uh a good time to try and um uh get the attention of the public uh to get feedback on this.
Did you want to take another look at it first, the changes, or you want us to pu- put it out? I guess I don't know if that was going to be your question.
Um I think uh maybe, maybe a joint meeting of uh uh planning and zoning commissions to review uh what would be uh the draft final report before it goes out to the public. You're muted, Steve.
Yeah, my dog is running around, so I'm trying to neither that at the same time. Um yeah, we could, we could figure that out. Um I, my question, do you want would would this group like to read through it to look at the changes again first before we put it out to the public?
Well, Steve, one of the things I was wondering in conjunction with the bubble changes is if the um industrial zone areas that are in black that you showed um or different colors that you showed on different segments, if perhaps those areas could be blown up a little bit with street names in them? Uh this was really hard for me to tell. But one of them, I was wondering why it could possibly be like it was. And then when I drove around and thought I was where it was, um I I guess I kind of got it, but um I I had some difficulty understanding where these things are.
Right. Yep, make a few more street names is a good idea. So people can, residents can have a better point of reference.
Are you talking about like on this map here?
Yeah, I mean, I I I was wondering, you know, why they were so prohibitive in the language on on one part of it. And then I thought to myself, well, maybe AMEX land is in here and that's why they're concerned about prohibiting residential. Um but I I'm still not really sure, but I think that's where it is.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll talk to them about that, that the whole issue with that is when you're um it's based on the scale of the map, what streets, street names pop up and what street names don't.
But I'm like, for instance, the Martin Luther King area, I mean, it's really easy to tell because it's both sides of the entire street. But you know, when you get down to um the, some of the areas around, um I'm I'm thinking that they're around Chestnut Street and in that area, I I can't tell where it goes.
Maybe we could do another, and I'll look at all the maps.
It's not that big an area.
Yeah, and and these are the most, this area is probably the most complicated just because of the 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 small parcel size and the this, the streets, for whatever reason, none of them are like lined up or a rectangular or anything, just to kind of jog in and out. So maybe we do um maybe we blow up this area over here and I can take a look at the other areas as well.
Yeah, Steve, on the map on the right where they identified um rezone to C, at least re-identified Lexington Avenue, because most people know what street that is, but on that map, it's not even identified. It should be consistent with the map on the left.
Yeah, that's just the way it was drawn, but we can
Right, they slapped it out when they put the black dotted line around the area.
Stephen, in answer to your question, um I I'd like both the planning and zoning commissions um uh to have a look at the the revised plan uh before we put it out to the public.
I agree.
I can send it out to this group and both the commissions as well. That's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, um before we, wow, we're going a little longer than I thought. There are um a few members of the public who had hands raised. I don't know if they still do or not. I know we we reserve some time for public comment. If anybody, I can take the questions right out of the Q and A if that's easier or you want me, there's only two people waiting. If you want to let me have them pop on and say hello or had a question, I'm happy to do that too. Now there's four Q and A.
It's all, it looks like it's only one person.
Yeah, they're all the same person.
Yeah, ju- just to answer Mr., um I think it's uh Cher's question, you're not, you wouldn't be required necessarily to have um the taller floor spaces, depends on the zone and depends, it may be through a bonus, it may not. So um that hasn't been 100% finalized yet. But if you have any further comments, feel free to email, um email me and I'm happy to address them or get back to you. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, well, hopefully I'll let you know when. It might be a week or 10 days before they can turn these around, depending on the level of um edits they have to make to the graphics and the charts, but we'll, hopefully we're getting closer to the finish line with this. So I appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye, everybody.
Bye.